Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a forty-eight hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on November tenth, two thousand twenty-one, as is required by law.
The city council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines of the Oakland Public Meetings Act by utilizing a telephonic conference system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in this forty-eight hour notice. During the public portions of the meeting that are not open to public comment, all callers from the public will be muted.
During the public comment period-
Those who have interest in addressing the council-
Will first be organized by last name, then called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired.
Public meeting assistants accessing the call-in number should call City Hall at seven three two, seven four five, five zero zero seven.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
And if you would kindly remain standing for a moment of silence in prayer and reflection to remember the families and members of our community who fell to the hands of violence. Pray for peace on our streets and in our hearts. Thank you.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Madam President, the correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearing ordinance for discussion on second reading. The first one is an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title X Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten point two zero, Handicap Parking, Section ten point two zero point zero one zero, Schedule three nine Parking Zone for Handicap Persons, Add one five one Hale Street and two one seven Handy Street. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L, M through P, Q through T, and letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. All right, the list is now closed. Madam President, we have no members of the public.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick Title Three Revenue and Finance, Add Chapter three point four zero Payment in Lieu of Parking. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, can you please prepare a list for us?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through D, E through H, I through L-
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone else A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. All right, the list is now closed. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Cradaville. Can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record? And I did receive your call, but I did not receive it till later in the afternoon, that's why I did not get back to you. So, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, Charles Cradaville, resident of the Second Ward of New Brunswick. Spelling is still the same, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, a community newspaper here, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. Wanted to ask a little bit about what prompted the Payment in Lieu of Parking Ordinance. Generally, something that I agree with and support. I'm curious whose idea it was and, you know, how this came to be on your agenda tonight.
This came from the Director of Planning, and I think part of his responsibility is always looking for different ways to utilize things that make the city better and make our development better for the community, and this is one of those practices that's commonly used in other areas, and it suits the needs of the urban area setting that we have well.
Okay. So, I want to understand, this would allow people who are doing projects approved by the zoning board or the planning board to, you know, if they get a parking variance, they would have to pay per space that they are, you know, to the extent the variance grants them, you know, the ability to build something with less parking spaces that are required, they would pay five thousand dollars per space for that deficiency? Is that correct?
Well, this isn't an in-place of, this is on top of. This gives us another option to convey to people that come before us with an application that has a deviation against our parking standards. So, we could still do, go through the normal course of action, but if they meet the threshold for this, then yes, you know, as long as it's approved on a case-by-case basis through the zoning board or the planning board, it would be a five thousand dollar fee for the parking space half paid with the application and half paid upon the CO.
Okay. And so, I just want to clarify, and maybe the planning director can help. The figure that would be paid, the total amount, is based upon the deficiency versus the same standard that the Planning and Zoning Board are using, right? The RSIS standards? So, the, you know, whatever variance is granted would dictate the amount of the fee. Is that correct?
Based on the threshold of the formulas that's used. And, Mr. Dominguez, I don't know if you want to get into that formula?
That's not a problem. Council President, so to clarify, the ordinance sets its own standards, which are less than RSIS, and if you were to require a parking variance below these thresholds, then the five thousand dollars per space feature triggers. So, it's not necessarily that you're deviating from RSIS, which is still something that you would need to go to the board to get relief from, but if you are sufficiently down in terms of how much parking you're providing, that you hit this additional lower threshold, then you would have to pay from that point forward. And it's five thousand dollars per space, half of which, and you don't pay it unless you're approved. So, you don't have to go pay half of it to go to the board. You pay half of it prior to being able to get your construction permit should you be approved, and the other half prior to getting your certificate of occupancy.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, say for the record that I think it should be the same standard, not a lower standard. And I also wanted to ask, what will the money be used for? It says that the parking authority is going to be in charge of it, and that's something that I'm, you know, concerned about because I think that, you know, the things that are listed here, shuttles and transit and improved infrastructure for walking and cycling are not exactly the specialties of the parking authority. The parking authority is the ones who has built more spaces here than anybody else. I would argue they're kind of part of the problem that the ordinance seeks to address. So, I'm concerned that you'll be funding the agency that kind of created the problem here. It's one reason why I think the city should have a Department of Transportation that could holistically look at issues like the roads that are in bad shape, intersections that are dangerous, and also, you know, take the lead on issues like getting better public transit so that people can get around without a car.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradaville. And just a quick add-on to what he was saying, will be the parking authority, and the trust will be set up specifically for such things as maintenance of the decks and the lots and to help with parking loss mitigation, you know, such that, again, he said the shuttles and the transit and infrastructure. I just wanted to clarify that. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Danielle Moore, M-O-O-R-E, Somerset Street. I will continue on with what Mr. Cradaville was saying, due to where, wow, one thing I surely will say, if this money is going to the parking authority, and I shall say, which would be a lot of money, I say that one thing that I would speak on, due to where I don't think it's necessary for what the City of New Brunswick or the Mayor or the City Council, which I know you agreed on already, almost a hundred thousand dollars towards, like I said, cleaning, what, French Street, George Street, Eastern Avenue, and Remsen Avenue, due to where, what, the work is not even really still being done? So, I would say, wow, part of this money should go towards that instead of using wasting, I should say, taxpayers' dollars, due to where, what, you only have two employees to do the cleaning, and like I said, due to where hardly the streets are ever cleaned. So, wow, I should say that, what, since the parking authority is in charge of that, I'd say, wow, it would, the money surely would go with helping cleaning. And for one thing, due to where you gave them a raise over twenty-five thousand dollars, which, like I said, it doesn't consider to, twenty-five thousand dollars for garbage bags, and what, you still didn't give the employees a raise on that. So, wow, I have to say, don't really trust this money going to the parking authority, due to where we are, everyone should see how they cannot handle money already, due to where they're in financial debt. So, I will, like I said, agree with Mr. Cradaville. I don't think this is good for the parking authority to be in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Ms. Stork, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record?
Linda Stork, S-T-O-R-K, twelve Park Boulevard.
Thank you, go ahead, Ms. Stork.
Some of my questions were answered, but I don't, pardon me?
I just said, go ahead, Ms. Stork.
Pardon me?
Continue.
Oh, okay. Um, I, I'm not, but I'm not sure I understand, so what is the problem that's being addressed here, that we have too much parking?
It isn't necessarily a problem, but some of the RS, the RSIS standards don't necessarily take into account, you know, for specific settings, such as an urban environment that has, that's a hub to transportation. So, some of those standards don't suit our needs well for development, for community. We don't want to become a city full of parking decks that are empty at any point, and we don't want to force development around those when the streets can be used in a better way, and the money can be appropriated towards keeping, you know, the parking decks and the structures that we do have in better shape, and trying to get people to use mass transit, walking, bicycles. It's the type of community that, the type of environment that we have in our city. So, it isn't that there's a problem now, this is just a tool to help us move in a better direction.
Oh, because, so, will, so will the money help people, well, oh, no, excuse me, so, if, so there's a whole new parking deck being built that is adding on more spaces than were required for the project that it goes with?
Correct.
So, it seems like, so is this like an effort to fill up that space?
Not at all.
How is-
The one has, the one has nothing to do with the, this is payment in lieu of parking. It is not parking spaces. So, this would be that the company would pay-
Right, so it seems like it's just, there's not going to be parking provided, then it's, I don't know, I just find it very hard to park a lot of times in New Brunswick, you know, without going into a deck on the ninth floor or something. Honestly, it's easier sometimes to just keep driving straight over the bridge and pull up right outside a little store at Highland Park and run in and, you know, buy or do whatever and come back out and hop in your car. Parking decks are most, not the most convenient. I don't know what, who, so this would just be in general, that people could in lieu their parking requirements? Because a lot of times, it's better, it's better to have the parking more spread out. I can't even imagine what's going to happen in the neighborhood when the one thousand car deck goes up on those, you know, little streets, the Somerset Street, the side streets. They're not really set up for that. That's a lot of cars. And it seems like it would be better urban planning to have it spread out a little bit, since the places that are coming to maybe these other projects wouldn't necessarily be closer to that. It might be closer to have them, you know, provide some of their own parking, or all of their own parking. It just, I mean, I've seen how it worked out when, for example, a school was built and didn't provide, and didn't provide enough parking. It just makes all kinds of problems in the neighborhood, the competition for the spaces and some of the things that go on, and then, you know, people informally lease from other places in the neighborhood that have, you know, have a few parking spaces and everything. It would just be, seems to me, more convenient to have parking associated with the different projects on site. That's just my opinion. I don't see how the money that they're paying will help people park.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stork. Your time is adjourned.
Will it subdue on thought in the deck?
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers on this ordinance?
No, Madam President, no more speakers.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance for two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-two. We are preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z, E through H, I through L-
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. Letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council on this ordinance? This will be the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. The list is now closed. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Hello again, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to ask what prompted this, you know, whose idea was it to change the salary ordinance and who's getting raises?
There were two positions that were affected by this, and it expands the salary range to bring them into compliance with the amount of money they're receiving now, and it was for the Director of Social Services and the Director of the Water Utility.
So, did I hear correctly that these folks were getting paid above what the ordinance allowed, and now the ordinance is being changed to match what has been the practice of the city?
Mr. Jewels, is there something you'd like to address, or Mr. Shanning?
I think your response was very adequate, Council President.
And I have a follow-up question? Yeah? So, these folks were being paid in a way that exceeded what the salary ordinance allows? Is that what I'm hearing?
Their pay is, has to be within a salary range. So, by the range being changed, their salary is now compliant with the range.
And for how long was it out of compliance?
Oh, hmm, maybe two or three months? I'd have to check, each one's different. Was it within this calendar year?
So, these folks were given raises this year, and that's when they became out of compliance?
You got it.
Okay. Were other members of the cabinet given raises?
That was just so, this only speaks to those two changes, this management salary ordinance. Those were the two changes that are in here.
Yes, and it includes items for all the directors, so I'd like to know about these directors. Did they also receive raises this year, or only these two?
I actually don't have the answer to that. Mr. Jewels, is there something you'd like to speak to, or?
Council President, each year, the salaries of all the city employees, some are contracted, they all go up accordingly to contract. Management also follows a similar standard. I don't think it's appropriate to get into the individual employees in this forum.
Thank you.
To be clear, none of these employees are in a union, right? This is the discretion of the administration, how much they want to pay these folks. They don't have a union, right?
They do not have.
These are like the bosses.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Cradaville?
Yeah, I'm just curious why the administration is giving raises to the cabinet when we're having trouble finding people to work the jobs at the lower end of the totem pole? Why aren't we giving a raise to the sanitation workers or the Department of Public Works, especially since you're having trouble staffing up those places? You know, is it true there's still people on the city payroll that get paid less than fifteen dollars an hour, like the camp counselors and stuff?
And just to be clear, when you're speaking about the Department of Public Works, I believe that those are contracted, that's a union contract with those people, so that's completely separate from what you're speaking of here.
All the contracted employees-
It's on the ordinance, it's in the ordinance.
Increased this year, Council President.
Do you have any, Mr. Jewels?
All the contracted employees received their annual increase this year as per the contract.
Thank you.
Right, and there's certainly employees that are hourly and not in a union, some work for the library, some work for things like YSS. Are there still folks that are making less than fifteen dollars an hour on the city payroll?
I'd have to go through everything, and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, because I remember a certain guy that ran for mayor and, you know, pledged to get everyone to fifteen dollars an hour, and I remember a certain chief of staff to the incumbent mayor who said that, you know, folks would make more under the, you know, Establishment Administration proposal, but we never saw that proposal, we never saw those numbers, and now we see the department heads, some of whom already make six figures, getting raises, and, you know, nobody can even say if there's still folks making less than fifteen dollars an hour, because it's obviously not a priority for you to pay those people what they deserve and pay them well, and I think that, you know, this is a backwards approach. We need to put the-
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cradaville. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Hi, yes, once again, I will agree with Mr. Cradaville, what he's saying, due to where, very disappointed how all these other contractors, workers are getting raises, but before I, I understand, so I can understand you, so, what, were they getting paid too much, or they just got a raise?
They weren't getting paid too much. They received a raise, and it was out of compliance with the salary range and the ordinance, and now this brings it up to date.
So, they weren't paid extra, so, okay, you're just really updating their raise with this resolution?
Up, yes.
Well, like I said, I will surely agree with Mr.-
Let me just say this, we're not, this isn't, I just want to clarify something. This is not updating their raise, this is updating the salary range for that position, and there is a difference. So, this is updating the salary range for the position. It has nothing to do, in effect, with the actual raise.
Okay, well, like I said, I will continue on with Mr. Cradaville saying, I'm very disappointed with our mayor and the city council, due to where, like I said, our city employees, garbage department, Department of Public Works, and definitely the parks department, due to where we know it's a huge shortage, due to where they don't have enough staff, where you went from almost twenty-one workers down to six employees and still no hiring, where they can't keep up with the maintenance of all the parks, how, what, the mayor tries to put it on, ooh, the homeless are taking up the space, so we can't cut the grass at certain locations. Well, that's not true, where, come on, think about the ones who are, like I said, really busting their rear end, working seven days a week, due to where New Brunswick is so overcrowded, and while the mayor still haven't did anything special for them, come on, it's time for them to do a re-raise. Like I said, you're giving a raise to what? All the ones who are sitting on their rear end, and it's surely not right. I mean, it's very disappointing, and like I said, believe me, I'm so glad people are really seeing, it's time for Mayor Cahill to go, due to where everything is being done oppositely of what should be being done. And as dirty and infested as New Brunswick is with rodents, we surely need plenty more workers with cleaning New Brunswick up. I've been a resident for forty-four years, and New Brunswick has never been this dirty before, infested with rats running up and down the street during broad daylight. So, wow, please, I hope you're giving everybody else's word about all the ones, like I said, sitting on their rear ends, raise. Come on, start thinking about the ones who are really- Come on, start thinking about the ones who are really working, working in, in, in New Brunswick, repairing our rural roads. What, getting all the garbage seven days a we- we- come on, cleaning the park, even, what? You have over there at the monument off, on, by Walgreens, what, where they have to pick up dog poop every, every day over there? We, we, where, where I have the recording, come on. And then also, for example, where acts what, come on? Crossing guards, it's, wow, time for them to go up to fifteen dollars an hour, due to where you have a shortage on that. How, if it wasn't for so many, at least four-year crossing guards, working three spots a day, three times, three different locations, you would have an extreme shortage on that. When are you gonna really feel it in your heart? Wow. Stop paying the ones who are sitting on their rear end. Very disa- disappointing. And that's why I say New Brunswick, time for a new mayor and council members. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Ms. Stork, the floor is yours.
Um, hi, yes. Thank you. Um, so, so the salary, um, the salary guide was a dollar amount, not a percentage, because it almost sounded like, they said, when the, um, when the unionized workers get their raise, uh, traditionally, they give also the non-unionized people a similar raise? I think that was the terminology used. So, I assume that it was maybe a percentage, and somebody did the math wrong? Um, but if it's an actual, if it's a dollar amount, I don't-
No, nothing, nothing-
There's a dollar cap on the amount.
Ms. Stork, nothing you just said is correct.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Nothing you said is correct. This has nothing to do with the salaries between the contract employees and the administration. And it was nothing to do with a percentage. It was the fact that there was a salary range, and they have, there's a range for each salary position. And what the employee was making did not coincide with the, with that salary range. And now this puts them into, uh, into compliance.
Right, so it was a dollar amount. So, somebody gave somebody a, 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 a raise to put them over the dollar amount that was in the ordinance. And, and I take issue with being told nothing that I said was correct. I'm saying what I've heard here, that these are traditional raises that are given to the management people, just like the other, you know, the union people get their raises, which I would think would be a percentage usually in a union contract. Um, so what was incorrect about what I said?
You were saying that, that they gave a, a, you said they gave a raise in error based on a percentage, and that was not the case. That is not, that did not happen here. There was nothing given in error.
Excuse me. I did not say that. I don't see what you're hearing. I said that I had thought maybe, and I clearly said I had thought maybe it was a percentage, and that somebody just got them. That would be more understandable to me than there just being a dollar cap that was just not respected, and now has to be changed after the fact. You know, 'cause, 'cause I agree, our money should be downlined, it's, uh, uh, because another, yes, now I'm remembering another time I was called a liar. The volunteers over there doing the work of the Parks Department in the park, because, yes, I talked to them. Turns out, I'm not crazy. They're doing exactly what the Parks Department used to do. But, yes, you told me that that was not true, and that, well, because you just did it again.
If you have any comments on this ordinance, if you're gonna speak over me, I'm gonna deem you out of order. Do you have any other comments on this ordinance?
Okay, well, just, uh, that you've spoken over me twice so far, and that I only spoke over you when you were misrepresenting what I had said, and, and you were getting ready to do it again.
You're out of order, Ms. Stork. Is there anyone else on the list?
No, Council President, no one else is on the list.
Move the ordinance. Second.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sakura Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.50. Provisions for, uh, subtitle one of NJ Statute Title 39, Enforcement, Section 10.50.030. Schedule of Title 39 Enforcement Agreements at Ninety Fire Group Urban Renewal Limited Liability Company, Ninety Fire Street.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, at 5:30, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sakura Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16. Shopping, Standing, or Parking, Section 10.16.020. Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, at Joyce Kilmar Avenue.
Remove the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December 1st, 2021, at 5:30, same date to the advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Sakura Ludwig.
Yes. Next, we have Resolutions 1 through 27. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting to public comment on the resolutions only for up to five minutes per person. One time up, Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on the resolutions, please state your name and the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to dial star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through D. E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
Chantal Ricketts.
Can you spell that?
C-H-A-N-T-A-L. Last name, R-I-C-A-E-P-S.
Okay. Letters Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Okay, Ms. Stork. And letters U through Z. Is there anyone A through Z who wishes to address the council? This will be the last call. If you wish to speak on the resolutions only. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Hello again, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Hello again, Charles Cradaville. I wanted to ask about the resolution for the meeting schedule for next year. Was that pulled?
No. It's on here. It is number four.
Okay, and what does it say about where the meetings are gonna be held?
It does not address that. It just addresses when they will be held.
Okay, and are, are you sticking with the 5:30 time, or, uh, going back to 6:30 for part of the year?
I believe we're sticking to the 5:30 time.
Okay, and while we're on the topic, is there any idea where the meetings are gonna be? Have you, have you been able to secure a space?
Uh, not at, not at this time. I'm not prepared to announce anything to the public. But everybody will be notified in public time and as required, um, of us, so.
Well, I gotta say, we're, I'm sorry, I gotta say, we're twenty months into the pandemic now and still on the telephone for these meetings. It's really not acceptable. Other communities have used better technology, and honestly, most are resuming, uh, in-person meetings. And the city certainly has spaces that could accommodate these meetings in person. I've gotta figure, at this point, the council is keeping them on the phone, uh, because you, you, you don't want to have the, uh, in-person interactions that we all used to, to know and love. But I'll move on, um, one four, it ends in 148, labeled number 22, Farren Redevelopment Plan. Uh, can you tell me, um, do you think it was appropriate for there to be a ceremonial groundbreaking for a project when there is no designated redeveloper? Apparently, the redevelopment plan is not even complete, uh, and no site plan has been even submitted to the planning department. Um, the, you know, of course, I'm talking about the Farren Site, which is publicly owned by the Parking Authority, but, uh, you know, the Governor and Devco are, are, uh, uh, you know, holding events there, saying that they've got big plans for it. But none of those plans have been approved by the city. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. We have, plans have not come across the Planning Board yet, or the zoning board, whichever they would go to. I believe it would be the Planning Board, but, um, plans have not been submitted yet.
So, would you agree that this is putting the cart before the horse, and it's inappropriate?
I, I really don't want to comment as to why the Governor and Devco did the ceremony that way. And it wasn't something that came before the council, so I don't have any, any comment on the process that they took with that groundbreaking.
Okay, can you tell me what is in the, uh, the resolution for the, the redevelopment plan? You're obviously sending this back to the Planning Board for them to make changes. What changes are they making? Or are you asking them to make?
There are, I, I, there's nothing, um, specific in here, but generally, it's gonna relate to, it says bulk standard modification uses and parking coordination. Um, more particulars would be presented to the Planning Board, and they're not a topic for discussion for the council at this time. And you're correct, this is just to refer that, um, just refer that to, you know that, just refer that to allow them to present it to the planning.
Well, I'll look forward to the Planning Board's discussions on that. I do recall some five years ago, when, uh, this plan was revisited by them, and there was zero traffic improvements to the, the, the bad intersection there. And some of us came and spoke up and spoke out. And then ultimately, you know, the, the Devco plans reflected, finally, some much-needed traffic improvements at the area. But I gotta say, this is, again, cart before the horse. Um, you know, i- if, if history is any guide, what will happen is the Planning Board will do what Devco wants for, uh, as far as crafting this redevelopment plan, instead of looking holistically at what the city needs and what would be the best plan, and then choosing the best, uh, you know, company to, to, to work with. Instead, it's all been done backwards. The company's been chosen first, even though they're not the designated redeveloper. They're, you know, holding events on the site, uh, you know, pledging that they're going to build on it long before they've even gone through the steps to get Housing Authority designation to be the redeveloper, and even longer before they got a site plan. And so I think that this is unfortunate, that the city, you know, always does this and, 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 you know, um, uh, lets the developer dictate what should be built, instead of looking at what the needs are and trying to find the right, um, right entities to work with. So, disappointed with this, um, and, and, uh-
Thank you for your comments. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Please dial star six to mute yourself.
Hi, yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you now.
All right, thank you. I will speak on, uh, for, for, with about meeting schedule. I will have to say, at first, when we started off President Suzanne Sakura loving you, you had me full, thinking that, wow, the meetings are really being held because of health issues. Now, I'm seeing, this has nothing to do with it. I, I see that the meetings are not being held, due to where doesn't, doesn't have patience to really, you would have more pressure, more people coming to meetings. And I will say, after last Thursday, seeing every council member, what, grouping up with not one mask on, one person? So, this is no longer regards to health with COVID-19. This is where you don't want to feel the pressure, you don't want to take the time as well, as, as to go through a whole entire, much longer meeting than on the phone. It's always for the record after, where with you getting the last wo- word of what's to be said and all. It, so I honestly, Mr. Cradaville, I don't even see, as with Ms. Suzanne Sakura loving being president, I don't even see that there's gonna be any meetings in person. But like I said, after Thursday, with no one wearing a mask, being close on each other, taking pictures and all, this is no longer regards to health, uh, with COVID-19, with any of our council members. I will speak on, uh, uh, number six. It's good to see that garbage trucks are being purchased. But once again, I surely hope that, wow, these are garbage trucks where the liquid will not be leaking out every time the button is pressed, due to where it's creating too much pollution, too much odor, where that's another situation even on George Street now, where people do not want to sit outside and eat, or walk through, due to where it stinks down there so bad. So, hopefully, you're buying the right equipment to stop polluting our city, due to where, I know most of you drive, maybe you, I know you walk, Mr. Anderson, but come on, coming through here to garbage, garbage day, any area, how it stinks so bad, other than, I guarantee you, probably doesn't stink in Rutgers Village is bad. But like I said, please, I hope you do start buying the right equipment to start help cleaning our, our city up, due to where, what, once that washes away, paint, oil, whatever, food, garbage, whatever, how it goes down in our storm, storm drains. Please, buy the right equipment. If we, please do research before you do it, because it's polluting our city entirely too much. I will say, I do see so many resolutions regards to the Department of Public Work Disposable Agreement, a lot of money, but like I said, once again, I don't see anything for our workers. When, when are you really gonna think about our workers, how hard they are working? I see over three hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff here, regards to, what, waste disposal, five-year contract, and other, other things. But wow, come on, I think it's time for you to start thinking about our employees, who have been there, working so hard to really keep New Brunswick good, good, and clean, clean. Please, I think it's time to really start. I would like to ask, if you can ask Mr. Volantly with number 27, I do thank him for meeting with me on November 3rd. I didn't get a chance to thank him the last meeting. But we were, we were discussing some water situations, uh, regards to how the water's coming off the feast, off of Feaster's Park. If you can, please tell me, is there some type of connection with, with what we discussed, Mr. Volantly?
You'd have to speak to him about that, uh, you know, you can call him and ask him about that, but this is for Paul Robeson Boulevard. I'm not sure that, that, uh, this relates to Feaster's Park.
Well, is Mr. Volantly, it's, it's a, it's a resolution. Is Mr. Volantly on the line?
If you have a specific question for any of the administration, you can contact them directly. If you have any other comments about any of the resolutions.
I'm questioning about Resolution 27. Now, can Mr. Volantly, please, explain to me, is, is, what this is?
This is for engineering services for a, uh, the Paul Robeson Boulevard Stormwater Project. It's for the engineering services.
So, would you please, wow, you would have your day-
Thank you, and just to clarify for the record, I think Ms., when Ms. Moore was speaking about the council, uh, being seen without masks, it was an outdoor event-
it was an outdoor event. It was a parade site. Um, we were not congregated inside four walls of anywhere. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Chantelle Ricker.
Good evening, Ms. Ricker. Can you please spell your name, state, state your last name and spell it and give us your address for the record, please?
Please bow star six, unmute yourself if needed.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Chantelle. All right, I'm gonna name, say my name again and spell it slowly, okay? C is in Charlie. H is in Harold. A is in Apple. N is in Nancy. T is in Thomas. A is in Apple. L is in Larry. Chantelle. My last name is Ricketts. R is in Robert. I is in India. C is in Charlie. K is a kite. E is in Edward. T is in Tom. T is in Tom. S is in Sam.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You're welcome. I'm a homeowner on Comstock Street between Rumson Avenue and Lee. And I have called the City Services Water and Sewer about approximately six or seven o'clock.
Ma'am, ma'am, can I just?
Yes?
Ma'am, can I, ma'am, can I interrupt you for a second? This is relating to the resolutions only, it's not public comment yet? Do you have something, a question pertaining to any of the resolutions?
I'm sorry, I thought we, I thought you, you had keyed up the public comment section.
Just for the resolutions at this point. General public comment will come later.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have not attended one of these meetings before. I, I heard it was public comment.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, that's quite all right. There's different public comments. No, that's okay. There's different public comment sections throughout the meeting. And right now, we're on the public comment for the resolution section only. And then later in the meeting, we'll have general public comment.
Okay. Apologies. I'll wait.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on the list?
Yes, Madam President, Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Stork, the floor is yours.
Um, thank you. I would like to point out something for the record, too, that when you declared me out of order, I wasn't saying anything.
Ms. Stork, if you have.
You asked me if I had anything else to say and I didn't say anything and then you said I was out of order.
If you're gonna speak over, if you're gonna speak over me, I'm gonna declare you out of order again. If you have comments on the resolutions, you can speak to them now. If you have any other comments, you can make them during the public comment portion later.
So do you have any comments relating to the resolution?
Excuse me, who was speaking over who? Yes, I do, but, oh my gosh.
Ms. Stork, I run, I run. Listen, listen, I run these meetings.
I know you do.
It's important for everybody to hear me, for everybody to hear me and not to be interrupted. So when I do speak, you should listen to me. And if you try to speak over me, you're gonna be deemed out of order. It's not efficient for people to hear and it makes the, the meeting chaotic. That is why I, when I speak, you listen to me. That's how the meetings are run. So go ahead, if you have comments on the resolutions.
So you can listen to the tape. I was not speaking when you declared me out of order.
Ms. Stork, do you have?
Okay, number eighteen, cause I'm sure you probably.
Excuse me?
Excuse me? Can I talk now?
Ms. Stork, you're out of order. I'll come back to you after everyone's spoken, if you'd like to make comments on the resolution. Madam Stork, do we have?
I said number eight.
You're out of order.
We do not, Madam President.
Excuse me?
We do not. Ms. Stork was the last speaker on our list.
I'll allow her to come back on for the remainder of her time if she has any comments to make specific to the resolutions.
Ms. Stork.
Number eighteen, for the fourth time. Number eighteen.
What is your question?
My question is, did we, are these, um, are the additional legal services needed for people challenging their, their assessment, their most recent assessment on their property?
I'm not sure if they are the most recent ones, but.
Right, but there's, there's people challenging their assessments. Did that happen at a higher-than-usual rate this year? I'm just wondering why they need seventy-five thousand extra dollars, cause I'm.
Well, as, as the cases are closed, we are billed for them and this is, this is a result of cases being closed.
Also, this is money already spent. This is money that's owed out already. Yeah. Okay. You, you, I don't know if you realize, but you're breaking up when you, when you speak. So it's hard to tell when you're speaking or not, um, because you start to speak and then I don't hear anything and. I also had a question about Twenty-six, the grant from the county. Uh, is this a, an already existing program? Did we have this grant last year, like with a different name, or what does it consist of?
No, this, this is a grant.
So what does, uh?
This, this is a grant that covers employment for one social worker, consultant fee, materials, and two group trips, uh, trips, rather. And it's for, the youth restart program is something that we've been involved with. It's used to help youth that may not be on the correct path and they've engaged in low-level, um, crimes. And so this helps with them with building skills, getting them more familiar with law enforcement and making them aware of social services that are available to them to try to provide structure and get them on the proper path.
Oh, okay, great. Well, this is just like additional funding for an additional step of that program. That's great. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Ms. Stork.
Move to resolutions. Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes, and that's the standing on resolution R-112, 152.
We noted. Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Um, now, there's a couple things that I would like to address. First, I want to recognize Councilwoman Fleming and Toremyal Pittman for organizing a peace rally last Saturday. I would like one to speak to the particulars of that event, but I just wanted to recognize them and say thank you. I also wanna recognize Joe Johnson with the newly, um, formed Office of Veterans Affairs with the city for, um, putting together the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, uh, which was memorialized at the Veterans Day Ceremony last week. And he did an outstanding job. It's an important program and, um, just congratulations to all the families who are involved. I wanna recognize Captain Bobbadea from the Police Department for running and leading the New York City Marathon, wearing the thin blue line and proudly carrying the flag. Congratulations to him. Temperatures are dropping. We did have the first code blue last night, if that was any effect. And then, um, let's see, where do I have here? In regard to some comments made after last meeting, there was an accusation that the council is unaware of the violence occurring in our city and that we do not care about the impact on our community. This is simply not true. There were also accusations that our police are not active in pursuit of their duties and that crimes are not reported. That is simply not true either. I mean, I can speak for myself that I engage with our local law enforcement agencies. They in fact work diligently on their own and in coordinated efforts with available agencies and task force in proactive and reactive manners. Many of these investigative tasks are not, nor should they be available to the public for the safety and integrity of the operation. The community should remain vigilant and aware, using a see-something, say-something mindset, but never, ever placing yourself in harm's way. We just need to join together for that. Um, furthermore, crimes are reported. You can sign up for NICSOL alerts, you can look to the city website and social media for announcements and alerts, and you can look for press releases relating to investigations and crimes with appropriate news sources. Some rather, maybe many of these releases are joint statements with the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and are disseminated on their schedule. The information is out there. Just because it isn't in a particular media outlet does not mean it is not being shared with the public. You just need to seek the appropriate source. As it related to comments that the Police Department should use our council meetings for, uh, a question and answer session or to, as a reporting platform, that is not going to happen. That's not the purpose of our meetings. For clarification, the council is a legislative body and public comment portions of the meeting serve as time for the public to comment on matters before us. This will not become a law enforcement town hall, nor a question and answer session with administration. If you have particular questions, you should reach out to the appropriate departments for information. I have been consistent with allowing you, the public, to use all of your five minutes to make your comments without interruption, then looking into matters of concern and addressing them at the following meeting. This is a process that gives you the full use of your allotted time and allows us to research and work through those concerns and provide useful commentary. Um, also, I just want to wish everybody a Thanksgiving filled with love of their family and friends. Remember those less fortunate and especially those in need of a warm meal. Count your blessings and share them with the world. Have a happy Thanksgiving. And Council Vice President Escobar, do you have any comments to make this evening?
Just very briefly, and I, I'm pretty sure, um, Councilwoman Fleming will talk about it, but I was, eh, present at Saturday's, um, prayer video and I just wanted, um, say that this is, that's how, eh, we work as a community. Eh, one of the good things about doing things, eh, events like that, eh, as I stated at the last meeting, we had held two before, and the one we did in September, the results are, eh, coming out now that there's a church, eh, refuge church, eh, on George Street, who will be opening the doors to the children and families, eh, once a month to start. And everybody's gonna help out different organizations as a moving eye, as a family eye, to provide our kids and our youth a place that they could be safe, in your hope manner. And I'm hoping that this continues as we do more, eh, prayer videos, or peace rallies, whichever way you wanna call it, that we as the community united can, uh, address it in a better way without, um, blaming, right? People are judging. Let's just work as one. Eh, and also, I just wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a blessed, um, time with their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Anderson, do you have any comments to make this evening?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I'd like to thank the people who came out for Veterans Day, especially our veterans and especially our ROTC people that came from the high school, Middlesex County College, et cetera. Uh, they were in probably pro, uh, really close proximity. Um, I didn't consider myself in close proximity, moving around so much, so I wasn't about to wear a mask at that time. Uh, that was just my personal opinion there. And I would, uh, suggest to the council that they be, they've gone this far and I would not, uh, do any council meetings, especially Thanksgiving coming up, Christmas, when people are getting together and many doctors are talking about, uh, being careful and not making it go spike, so that our meetings shouldn't go to the public until at least, uh, next year, maybe January or February. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Egan, do you have any comments to make this evening?
Just wish everybody and their families a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fleming, do you have anything you'd like to speak to tonight?
Yes, um, I wanna thank Adrian Blum, who, the visionary, who actually, uh, won, started, started with the planning of the vigil, uh, also Pastor Darnell Thomas and Toremyal Pittman and just everybody that came out. It was almost monsoon-like conditions because the weather changed real fast, but we were so committed to doing it, we, we stayed with it, you know? We didn't even think about for a minute of canceling it. And that's not the last time that we're, we have something else, we have a few other things planned. And it shows, goes to show you that when people in the community work together, um, we can put together big things. I think some people were satisfied when we all used to be screaming at each other and some of us couldn't work together, but those days are long gone where we will be planning other events. We've had several events before, which we've invited people to come. Uh, some people, some people who have truly committed show up and some people don't. Sometimes it doesn't get the coverage, you know, the press coverage that it should get. But whatever, we're, we're still dedicated to what we're gonna do for the community. And that wasn't the last time. We will have, we will have a couple other things coming up real soon. And thank all the people that came out, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Ross, do you have an OEM COVID update for us today?
Good evening, this is Joseph Allen, I'll be delivering the COVID update.
Hello, Mr. Allen, thank you.
No problem. Uh, so as, as we've seen, uh, COVID cases are continuing to arise at least a little bit in recent past, uh, but the continued emphasis is on vaccination. Uh, that being said, with the holidays upon us and, uh, initial vaccinations, uh, being pretty and hopefully in the rearview mirror for quite a few folks, uh, COVID boosters has become a pretty hot topic. Uh, people that are currently eligible in New Jersey, although this list may change in the near future, is anyone who's had the J and J shot, uh, and is over eighteen years old, is eligible as long as it's been two months since their initial dose. Uh, and then for both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, uh, it's anyone who's sixty-five and older that is living in a long-term care setting, or anyone that's eighteen to sixty-four with some kind of an underlying medical condition, or, uh, if they have like an increased risk of exposure because of their job or where they live. And, uh, again, uh, vaccination locations can be found pretty readily through the, uh, state of New Jersey's website, covid19nj.gov. Uh, and vaccination is free for folks. And again, if there's anything very specific, uh, available locally and if there's any major changes to COVID news, we'll be posting it on our city website and social media. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. And next, I would just like to ask my councilmates, did you receive and have a chance to review the best practices worksheet and do you have any questions about it?
Yes, I reviewed.
And have no questions.
None. Done.
Okay, hearing none. We'll now move to the, uh, public comment portion of the meeting. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting for public comment for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. Callers on the line ending in zero seven zero four will need to bow star six to unmute themselves. Letters A through Z. A through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
Okay, Mr. Cradaville. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore. Q through T.
Chantelle Ricketts.
Linda Stork.
Cheryl Smith. Cheryl Smith.
Okay, I have Ms. Ricketts. Stork and Ms. Cheryl Smith. Is there anyone A through Z who wish to address the council on the public portion of the meeting? This will be the last call, A through Z. All right, the list is now closed. Madam President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. And Mr. Cradaville, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'll start by saying rest in peace to Segun Thomas, Jose Madero, Delfino Aparicio Lopez, Karan Mooring, Omar Maroquín Leviaman, Cedric Page, Azim Seiright, Lorenzo Hill Staden, and Rafael Flores Lopez. These are the nine people who have been murdered this year in our city. And I just think that they should be named and wanna extend my. And I just think that they should be named and want to extend my sincere condolences to them and their families. I'm reading a article, I guess, a post on the city website titled "Gun Violence: Firearm Facts." Can you tell me who is the author of this statement?
I don't have that information at this time, I will get it for you.
Through you, could you please ask the Deputy Director of the Police Department or maybe Mr. Barron if they were the authors or if they know who authored it?
I will, please move ahead with your comments and I'll get you the information.
Okay. Well, I'll look forward to learning who wrote it. It's not a, not a pretty piece here. I do want to say that I found it offensive. It says, quote, "In the vast majority of these cases, both the victim and the suspect have extensive criminal records involving prior firearm and weapon offenses, drug distribution, and crimes of violence. An exception, once again, is the victim of the April 19 homicide. In this instance, the victim was an innocent bystander merely driving by when hit by a bullet intended for someone else. The intended target in that case, however, has an extensive prior criminal record, including unlawful possession of a firearm, drug distribution, and acts of violence." These types of statements are disrespectful to the victims' families. You're implicating them in their own killings and without specifying who you're actually speaking about, you're smearing the reputations of all nine victims because you don't make it clear who exactly you're talking about. And it appears the author is even making the point that because the innocent bystander was killed by a bullet meant for someone with a criminal record, that that's somehow supposed to be reassuring or okay. This is sick! And I really want to know who wrote this statement and I hope that you'll get back to me and let me know who's responsible for this sick statement being posted on the city website. Can you tell me how many body worn cameras have been deployed so far in the city police department?
None.
Zero, okay. That's in violation of the law. I want to note that you said, "We don't want to become a city of parking decks that are empty." I think it's too late for that. And if you truly think that, why did you authorize? Why did you vote in favor of the new 1,200 space garage designed by the company of a convicted sex criminal for Hardenberg Street?
I have no comments at this time, Mr. Cradaville.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I will buy you lunch if that parking deck ever fills up. If there's ever a moment, a day, when all 1,200 spaces are in use, I would like to take you to lunch and you can say that you were right about that. For the record, the Parking Authority is in debt to the tune of $226 million. You know, you're talking about funding them through this PILOP program, but have they been able to pay their PILOT program? Have they been able to pay the city, the pilot that they neglected to last year?
I can look into it for you, Mr. Cradaville.
Through you, could you ask Mr. Drewless if they've paid up? Are they on schedule at least to pay up what they failed to pay on time?
I'll get the information for you if you want to proceed with your comments.
Okay, so you're not going to ask the official who might actually have the answer. Can you please ask the city clerk if she can comment on the problems with the election? I understand there were emergency ballots deployed because of widespread problems with the electronic poll books. I'd be very curious, as somebody who knows what she's doing, if she feels that those poll books were a good thing to use and if they should be used again in future elections or if they should perhaps not be used because they caused such chaos.
If you have a question directly for the city clerk, you can contact her directly.
So you're telling me I can't ask questions of the professionals that are on this call, including the clerk who's, you know, at all of your meetings and previously responded to any number of questions? Are you trying to prevent questions from being asked of the professionals who are attending your meeting? Why?
Your time has expired. I'm not trying to prevent questions. I'm not trying to prevent any comments that anybody in the public has to make. This is five minutes to make comment on anything you'd like. We take it under consideration. If you have questions specifically for different administrative positions throughout the city, the police department, fire department, there are different, you can contact them through regular channels and you can ask them those questions. This is not what the platform is for here. But please make your comments, we take them into consideration and I will get back to you once I research them. Now, who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Hi, yes, I will continue from the last meeting due to where with my thank you list. That's where I would like to thank Mr. Tom Valente on November 3rd for meeting up with me on Joyce Comer and Charles Street discussing situations and teaching me things about what's going on and also the situation with the water situation running off with Peester's Park. But I will say the city, the county, and North Brunswick is going to have to get together in making this situation on Joyce Comer and Charles Street mainly with this sewage mixing in, going through this stream. It's getting where, just from that stream, it affects all the way down to Handy Street with people's sewage backing up into their house. Something has to be done. I will also thank the officers on October 26th for car 911 saving the life of a victim on the corner, close to the corner of Remsen and Seamen Street, where the man OD'd and if it wasn't for the officers would not, with car 911, dared to do the injection to save the man's life. God bless you with your heart. Like I said, I know we do God good officers, posture good hard on to other ones who are just sitting on their rear ends. I will also say at the same time as I was leaving from there, walking around the corner, I was coming back and taking pictures with the river, car 914, another situation right on the opposite side of Lee and Seamen Street due to where another rescue, I can't say was that medical or drugs, but like I said, God bless that officer as well. I would also like to thank Mr. Keith Jones for giving me an update on the corner of Quentin Lewis with this market where it's opening up food, putting his germs on it and then putting back to. I'm glad that all of that was disposed, thrown in the garbage. And like I said, thank you, even though that's the county. I will thank Mr. Jones for keeping everything up to date, making sure the right things was done because, like I said, that wasn't right, opening up boxes of food. And I'm pretty sure you all on Facebook where you saw the video of the man then gluing it back together, whether they had ants or whatever. I will say, great job, thank you to Captain Bobadillo with his good run with, running the marathon. One thing, I will speak to Mr. Anderson. I said, I know Veterans Day was a very special day for you as councilmen due to where I will be donating, I will get to you, donate you some pictures. I have to say, I was a little angry due to where the type of president we have as council due to where it was such a good time. I'm just doing veteran pictures, taking the pictures of everybody to donate the pictures just like I did with Domestic Violence, the march, donate them. But wow, what kind of president do we have? Wow, just because you see me taking pictures where you keep trying to raise my temper and I'm going to put this picture on Facebook where I'm just taking pictures of our council members and wow, for you to turn your back like you're hurting me? What type of president do, New Brunswick, we do not need this. And like I said, for the record, you can say for the record or whatever. Like I said, whatever you keep trying to do to me to try to raise like anger to me, it's not going to work. But like I said, you will have your day. The more you keep trying to pressure me like I'm doing something wrong. Like I say to you, Suzanne Secora Ludwig, you are out of order and you will have your day for keep trying to pressure me and I'm not doing nothing wrong. But I will donate the wonderful, beautiful pictures to you, Mr. Anderson. I will get in contact with you where as a lovely memory out of all the awards with your family as well. But like I said, things, I, New Brunswick just please, I'm so glad that on Facebook as well and around New Brunswick, people are saying it's time for Mayor Cahill to go. And like I said, New Brunswick, please take it serious. It's time that we get our city, try to get our city back up on top of everything. So many departments is out of order, everything is being done backwards. We do not need a mayor like this. Come on, think about the future. And like I said, definitely surely think about the future due to where we surely need another president, someone to take the time, to take the people seriously. It's not about speed or whatever goes on. Just like I said one thing with the police department, due to where now you're saying no questions. It's a safety hazard. Why is New Brunswick Police Department allowing all these vehicles with jet black tinted windows? It is getting too dangerous. What, come on, when New Brunswick was colored, you wouldn't allow not one person? Where you cannot see the driver, come on.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. You've used all your time and for future reference, a portion of that time was spent making comments of personal attacks that are inappropriate under Robert's Rules of Orders, which govern the parliamentary procedures of this meeting. Please utilize your time for appropriate subject matter moving forward. Who's next on the list?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Rickett.
Thank you. Hello again, Ms. Rickett. We have your information from the clerk and the floor is yours for comments.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. So I have called the City Services Sewer Department roughly six or seven times over the past six weeks because there is a strong odor, a sewer smell on the street, Comstock Street, the entire street outside from Storm Drive. They, every time they've come, they've gone and put, I think they call it smell good, some type of, you know, attempt to, you know, deodorize it. However, the smell is very persistent and pungent. And so we need to get to the root cause. You know, for me, just it's not acceptable. And it sounds from the other comments that there's an issue. The last time I attended one of these calls was about 10 years ago and there was like a sewage renewal project going on with New Brunswick at the time, with this renewing the system. And this is a, this is a big issue. You know, I would imagine as a homeowner, I shouldn't have to call multiple times and have redundant ineffective solutions. And so that's why I attended this meeting today because I'm hoping that it can be escalated so that someone is really taken this seriously and then being accountable and responsive and have a real solution.
Thank you. I will, I will take your comments under advisement and I will speak with the department tomorrow and I will address it at the next council meeting. Thank you for your comments, Joan, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Cheryl Smith.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Smith, can you spell your name, state your last name, spell it and give us your address for the record?
Cheryl Smith, Power Street, New Brunswick. I just want to remind everyone that the New Brunswick Fire Department in an effort to help the homeless and the less fortunate, we will be hosting a coat drive. Coats will be distributed on Saturday, November 27th, starting at 10:00 a.m. at our Joyce Comer location. We are also collecting used, new, slightly used coats for women, children, and men every Saturday until then at any fire location. So just in the spirit of the holidays, wishing everyone a happy, healthy, and let's keep trying to help our less fortunate. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Who's next on the list, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Thor.
Thank you. Ms. Thor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I also would like to just take a minute to remember all the victims of gun violence and to thank the people that put the vigil together on Saturday. That was a really beautiful event. That location is close to my heart. 30 years ago, I lived less than two blocks down and 10 years ago, my godson was killed right around the corner. And a previous act of senseless violence. So it's not new, but it seems to be escalating. And I understand that, you know, the pandemic has brought its own issues and that New Brunswick is hardly the only place in the country or in the world where violence has escalated. But I would really like to see the city as a whole and the police department, together with the community, working on this proactively. You know, the first, the first step is acknowledging the problem, understanding the problem. And, you know, next would be to, to get the community involved, but it's going to take all the aspects of the community. And it was very heartening to me to see that there was a lot of unity on Saturday amongst different segments of the community that don't necessarily always all meet together. That was great to see. The turnout was not huge, but on the other hand, the weather, as has been pointed out, was, was really, really, just at that particular moment when people would have been heading over, was really, I found out some people had assumed that it had been canceled. So that was understandable. And I appreciate the steadfastness of the people who did, did show up and, and show that unity. And we need to look for, we need to look for solutions because this has been going on too long and we're going in the wrong direction. So I don't pretend to have all the answers. I think events like Saturday are a great, you know, that's, that's great. And the program that I asked about, you know, getting another counselor into the youth diversion program, that's great, these are all good components. But I would really like to see the city as a whole take the lead on this and, and get all aspects on board. To make a comprehensive plan to deal with the violence. Because it's just, it was, it was, it was hard for me to be back at almost the same corner, one corner over from where my godson had been gunned down. And now knowing those guys will be, they were caught and they'll be out soon. And you know, and what's the solution? You know, I would hope they've had a change of heart, but, you know. It would be, it would be really good if we had, you know, the systems in place as people do come home from incarceration to, you know, really support their reentry and positive participation in the community. And I think that also the police body cams is
Thank you, Ms. Thor, time has expired. Do we have any other members of the public on the list, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, sir.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.